Welcome to the East Bridgewater School Committee Meeting of April 11th, 2023. At this time, I take a motion to open the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Gordon.
Beat Scott.
Sorry, I just.
Aye.
Aye.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And thank you, E.B. Cam, for always live streaming and recording our meetings. And first up, we have Lilia. Welcome.
Hi, how is everyone?
Hi.
How are you? So I have a lot of updates. I just want to say thank you to Mrs. Byrne for helping me with all the updates for the Central School. So, starting off at the high school, all spring sports are back up in their season for the year, so that's very exciting. And a lot of the teams are starting off very strong, good record so far. We started term four this week, so it's been a pretty good transition. I think everyone's excited to get into the last term of the year. MCAS is continuing to take place throughout the building. Eighth grade was today and tomorrow. So, yeah, I think 10th grade was last week, so just finishing out with eighth grade. Some of the high school students were selected to head to Gillette Stadium on Thursday to participate in the Kyle Karas Conference, which is the first conference ever to take place. One of the, this is one of the very few of this kind of conferences in New England so far, and it's to address student mental health. So the students will be participating in breakout groups to bring back to the school and strategies and skills so that they're able to normalize the conversation centered around mental health. So moving on to the Central School, this month, they'll be celebrating autism awareness and math. So they have some dress-up days. Monday will be Mind Magnificent, Mind Monday, Sensory Friendly Tuesday, What's Your Passion Wednesday, Neurodiversity Thursday, and Autism Acceptance Friday. So that's very exciting, so hopefully they'll have a lot of participation in that. April is also Math Awareness Month, so in order to celebrate, they'll be having weekly dress-up days and weekly choice board activities, which will be sent home on Monday, April 3rd, for students to complete. They are encouraged to complete at least one choice board per week, and they should color the box to show which activity they choose to complete. At the end of the month, they should return the choice board to be entered into the raffle. The choice board includes a variety of activities for grades pre-K through second, and the dress-up days will be Thursday, April 13th, and that will be Wear a Pattern Day and Thursday, April 27th, which is Dress to the Nines, which is dressing fancy. So, yeah, it's the basis of everything going on. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know a lot, right?
Thank you. And next up, we have Superintendent's Corner.
So, I want to start right off with this, that we had a meeting, John and I had a meeting yesterday with the town administrator, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, and the Chair of FinCom, and the Town Treasurer, and had a discussion on the town meeting. And waiting for grants to come in for the schools and waiting for to see some more financial stability for coming from the state, if there's any more grants and any more monies coming towards for the town or the schools, that we would open the town meeting on May 8th, and they would do some town meeting business on May 8th, but they would move to June 5th to have the remainder of the budget meeting will be on June 5th. So hopefully, we'll see some, hopefully, we'll have some more of our grants that come in through this time and support our vision and mission here and our budget that's gone up to the town. I feel confident that the town will, that will work through this and will get there, and it's just another couple of months we have to wait to get to the town meeting. So, but I wanted to mention that this evening. I did speak to Mr. Sealy today for a moment via email, and I asked him if we could mention this tonight. He said that we could, and that so let the conversation, you know, begin, so as we move forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, tonight, you get my three-ring binder that has the evidence of the goals that we came up with in November for my evaluation. You'll have them, you can certainly call or email me next week. I'm in my office with any clarifying questions, if you have them. And then, I guess, on the following Tuesday, the 25th, we'll go over.
If you do receive clarifying questions, can you just compile them and bring them so that we all can hear the same, unless you email everybody back, or however you want to do it?
Yep.
Excuse me, did we, is this a summative evaluation or the midterm?
Summative.
This is summative, okay.
And in my own walking around the district, being down and listening to the third graders at Mitchell School, they told me that they probably got every question right on the MCAS during lunch the other day, and that they never felt so confident, and everything's great. So I said, "That's wonderful news. I hope to see that." They were very excited, they thought they did very well. Ms. McPerlin, you're down there as much as I am, so they seemed pretty confident and happy. And today, walking around, it seems seamless. In the classrooms, kids do feel very confident. I think a lot has to do with how we've configured the last couple of years and having the inclusion classes set up, the intervention classes, or the intervention model that we have going on, the data meetings that the teams have with the coaches and with the principals, it's really working, and you can certainly see a confidence level. That is, that building, everyone takes iReady, everyone takes MCAS. So when you walk around and you see teachers, staff, and students as confident, that I have seen over the last two weeks, just stopping in, walking around, whether it's during the lunch period, just watch them come out, or I saw them this morning real early as they began the first session this morning, the confidence level that we and the district has not seen in a few years really makes you feel good that we are the professional development, the coaching from the curriculum side, of the instruction from Jen, and bringing in the data from iReady, melting it with the MCAS, having the facilitators to intervene, and the intervention specialists getting into the classrooms, the IP students in the classrooms getting direct instruction, has really changed the confidence level, I think, in both staff, faculty, and the students. I can't say enough how happy the kids were. Like, you usually don't see that, I mean, they're like, they got everyone right. So I hope that that's, I hope that's a good thing. And if they don't, I'm sure we'll get through it, but it's nice to see the confidence. I did talk to Mr. Clements, he said the same thing, that, and I'm sure Mr. Taylor will hit upon it today, it's part of the, it's part of the scenario of being a high school student and taking one test that everybody's got to take and see how you do and where your level of understanding in subject matter is. The kids seem to be confident here as well, as I walked around a little bit and saw kids in the hallway. So hopefully, attendance was good and we moved through it. I know the attendance was excellent, they had two, they had one student miss in third grade, I think, today. Mr. Puckett told me this morning. So that's the stuff that we want to see, is confidence within our students. And we also want to see it on the other side, where our teachers and staff feel good about what we're doing and what everybody's doing. So kudos to the principals, getting their staff and faculty ready, and really, kudos to the teachers in preparing the students, because it's not just this, whether it's an iReady or if it's an MCAS, it's just everyday confidence. So I'm really pleased to tell you that, what we've seen, so.
Excuse me, can I ask you a question? I remember a number of years ago, when we started with your leadership, full-day K, and I think at the time, I asked you, you said, "It makes a big difference." What year did we start, what year did they start showing up?
It's fifth grade, because my son's starting.
Fifth grade, right now.
Oh, really? It's already up to fifth grade? Wow, five years ago, we started that?
Yeah, my hair was black back then. Yeah, it was five years ago. I would like to tell you that we have pure data, but I think having that year and a half, two years off during COVID, you know, you say pre-COVID or post-COVID, which is too bad, but I think the data would prove, and I see, then I just think that was a stumbling block there. I do think full K supports the mission, students being confident, and I would tend to move to Dr. Williams or Kate Byrne to discuss it at early childhood level, but from my point of view and what I see, there's so definitely a confidence boost.
Yeah, I think it's more evident in their developmental readiness, as opposed to maybe the academic piece. You know, and Kate can speak to this, one of the biggest things that we would hear from first-grade teachers, when we had a split at one time, and they were having full-day students coming into first grade and half-day students coming in, you know, to the superintendent's point, that confidence level that they have, the readiness of school, the readiness to be able to sit and learn for longer periods of time. So naturally, it's going to allow for them to be able to absorb more of the information and apply the skills more readily, too. So, you know, to the superintendent's point, not anticipating COVID, so we've got that little dynamic that's thrown in there as well, but, you know, certainly, especially having teachers who have had half-day students come to them and full-day students come to them, and being able to see the readiness of those students and the confidence of those students that just contributes to their overall acceptance into learning.
Yep. Well, that's great. I think, I remember back when this was on the table and impacted our budget to an extent, and that was the thought process, that as educators, you recognize the importance of full-day K, and I think it's behooves everybody to periodically just double-check with it and say, "Hey, this is really, it's really, we've seen a difference." And so I'm glad to hear that, that's really encouraging. Thank you.
And I know that John had the backup telephone system, John, that they were out here a couple weeks ago, but I'm not sure where we were at on that, and you said you were going to come back.
Yeah.
Who was going to be here.
So, Cam, a little more prepared this week to talk about the phone system. So our phone system is VoIP, it's Voice Over Internet Protocol, it's internet-based. We have two dedicated T1 lines for our phone system. These lines are being phased out by the telecommunications industry. On March 28th, we plan on replacing those lines with a broadband Comcast. In addition to broadband, we installed a 5G system, which is a backup system. So if you think about it, now we're on cable for our phones, cable goes down, we have a 5G backup system, like, which, if you think of it like a huge hotspot. So instead of using cable, it will go out to the cell towers, run our phone system. So that's the backup system we're planning, that's the whole, the whole system change and backup system we're planning on installing. We were hoping to have it done on March 28th. There was a part that was missing, it's called a cradle point, it connects the broadband to our telephone switches. That part came in last week. We are trying to, pushing them to try to come out during school vacation, because that would be a good time to do the crossover. I haven't heard from Josh, he was pushing them this morning to see if they could come out next week, but we're, you know, hopefully, seven to 10 days out before we're good to go. I mean, our phone system is still working. If a fiber line gets cut in Boston somewhere, we may, you know, we may be down, but there is light at the end of the tunnel.
Anybody have any questions about it? Thank you.
Excuse me, I have one more. As we get to the end of intemet, I know it's early, but starting on intemet, there are students in college that will be coming home for the summer. We are looking for staff here in, for subbing as an ISA, or if we have some young teachers or students that are in teaching profession and they want to come and sub for the remainder of the school year, please try to get in touch with, you can certainly call the schools, but I ask you to call Central Office, and we'll start to put some information out for that. But for any students that are out there, or parents that are out there, and they want their, their child who's coming home from college wants to go to work for a few weeks at the end of the school year, we could use all the help. Or anyone who is starting, is going to graduate and is looking for a job for next year, please go on to school spring. We have posted all of our jobs for next year, and the principals are starting. I know that Mrs. Puckett has a group on Friday coming in to interview. I know that Mrs. Byrne will have a position, I think, one available. Those are, those go very quickly at the elementary level. We are looking for, I think, high school math, we're looking, high school social studies, no, 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 English, high school English, but everything is posted. And also, I told, Mr. Lucini, Bill Lucini called me today, they are looking for bus drivers, and they are looking for staff. He's actually sending us, he did a commercial for Lucini on what they're doing, and he's asked us if I would help them put it up on our website. I said, "Send it to us, and we'll take a look at it," and then we'll go from there. And we, everybody needs help, but this is for our school system, so I would certainly support, you know, if anyone would like to drive a bus, please contact Lucini Bus Lines. They're paying for your training, they, they take you all the way through from, you know, A to Z, and then put you on a bus, so.
Thank you.
We need help.
How's busing doing now?
It's event-driven. I mean, it's event-driven, Mrs. Byrne, every day, we have a little bit of, it, there is, there's weeks where there's not one snafu, and then there's a week that we might have a flat tire. We've had a flat tire, we had an engine issue a week ago, we had, we had all drivers, everybody was great, and then a driver got sick, and I think he had to pull a driver from someplace else, and then they had to switch buses, and then Mrs. Byrne gets the brunt of it. The high school usually starts off okay, and then as it goes throughout the morning, Mrs. Byrne in the Central School gets the brunt of it. However, between John Shea and Joanne Benner, the principals, and Lucini Bus Lines, we have gotten much better with communication as the year has progressed. It's wasn't, it's not always the best between us and Lucini or Lucini and us, and we've had conversations, and it's gotten better, and I do believe that everybody has an event that's happening in their own place of business. So what's ever happening in Lucini and his other, within his own garage, and how many school districts he have, the same, there's many events going on at the three buildings that we have with the 200, 200 students that are getting on buses. And everybody's moving, and there's all, you know, and then all of a sudden, a cog gets in the wheel, and it's, you know, if they don't get to us quick enough, we start to hear from parents. If we put something out, but then another bus shows up, we might not know that. So we, I think the communication is much better, though, I really do. I think it's gotten better on both sides, and our parents seem to be liking the communication from the principals and parent square, and so that's a good thing.
Thank you.
I think Kate's looking to say something before she jumps out of her seat.
Since we now have short-term delays, a lot of them is flat tires and things like that happen the last couple of weeks, have been very popular, both in our boarding arrival and our end-of-day schedule. I mean, obviously, there are things like that that have been off in control, but from where we've been for the last several months, and even when we go, there are political along the way, I feel like we're not going to have this smooth as cash does the best of the way. So I do not, I am that person, who says, "But it's been, it's been a much easier deal." So I appreciate everyone's diligence, and please keep bringing in this down, but it's been, it's been great.
And I did promise Bill Lucini I would say this today. Yesterday about 4:30, I received a call, I was in the office, and someone had called me from one of our streets and said a lug nut fell off a bus. So I had emailed over there, I couldn't get through, they saw it, they immediately came to our buses when Central School came back in. It was not a lug nut, didn't drive back in, I don't know how many wheels there are, 16, you can drive back in on 15 wheels, he wasn't pulling the back end of the bus. There's these little plates that go over the wheel, and they're a little shiny, and it popped off. Some have them, some don't, but it doesn't do anything with the mechanical of the bus, but he said, "Please, we were not driving without a lug nut, please let everybody know." So he said, "Okay."
Thank you.
But he, yep, he called me just a little while ago to tell me.
Did you say something before? Okay, okay. Thank you. Next up, we have an update on Strategic Plan Number Three, Assessment and Monitoring Student Understanding, with Mr. Jay Phelan, Director of Special Education, Ms. Jen McPartland, District Curriculum Facilitator, Mr. Ron Taylor, Assistant Principal, and Mrs. Kate Byrne, Principal of Central. Welcome.
Got a nice share of Michael.
It's okay, Kate, it's okay.
Don't move over there. My logic phrase just went. We're keeping it fresh. Hey. Flexibility.
Yes. So we're here tonight to present on Goal Number Three, which is Assessment and Monitoring Student Understanding from the Strategic Plan. I can't believe we're already mid-April, that's giving me a little bit of agita here. But as a district, I think we are in a very good place with our assessment and our ability to be mindful and continuing to be mindful of being strategic when we assess and what we're assessing, and to strive not to over-test our students. Since the last meeting, we had the winter diagnostic, and all of the results went home to families. Those reports were accompanied by information on how to interpret the results, and I hope you got the email today, which was all of that information for anyone who might not have any students in the system. We will be moving on, excuse me, I also had the pleasure of going to Central School. I was able to be a speaker at one of the parent workshop series at night to kind of go over, provide an overview, and then answer any questions about iReady and the diagnostic, and then also how to read those reports. We'll be quickly moving into our final diagnostic of the year, which will be May 8th to June 2nd, that's the window. It is a little bit of a tricky time of year, because it does overlap with MCAS, so we are kind of, you know, shuffling it around, but we do have a month to complete it, so we try to make sure we're not double-dipping during the course of a week, but the schools have a nice schedule set up for that. The results will go home again to families, and this is one of my favorite times of year, because it really allows us to look at the data we get from these reports, and look at not only individual students, but look at entire classrooms, look at entire grade levels, and then in conjunction with all of our other assessments, we can really get a clear picture of, you know, where are we really strong, where are areas that we can improve upon. So we're going to prepare for next year by using that data. We'll also continue to assess, we've made the decision to continue with grades K through eight in reading and math for next year. And all of that, one of the big things we're looking to do is make sure that we're providing each of our students the ability to move forward with grade-level content. We all have the COVID gaps right now, even we have COVID gaps, but I think we have to remember that if we have those areas of need for students, it's not about going back and reteaching whole grade levels, it's about being able to provide real, in-the-moment interventions, so that a student can access their grade-level material, but also kind of fill those gaps along the way. So that's something that all of this data helps us, helps us do. We are also really making sure that we're building a robust MTSS system, so our multi-tiered systems of support, and looking at our whole child, and that involves using something like iReady, things like MCAS, classroom data, formal and informal observations. It's about getting that whole picture of a child. So I know that Mr. Taylor's going to talk a little bit more about that.
It's a nice little segue. I see in classrooms, when I observe, such a difference from back when I was in high school. I recall taking an assessment, you know, the teacher wouldn't really have much of an understanding where I stood as a student until I took the assessment, and then I might not get it back for a couple of weeks, but we've already moved on and we didn't reflect or learn from mistakes. Things are so different now, and when I walk around this building and I see teachers using common assessments, talking in their departments about how students did in one classroom versus another, what strategies they're using, meeting with students, pulling them out into hallways to help close those, those learning gaps that they have, it's really a personalized learning experience for our students. Gone are the days where one student raises their hand, and the teacher calls on them, they get it right, and they move on. Sure, that happens here and there, but when you observe a classroom, you see teachers using technology to make sure that they're hearing voices from every student, and then they're making decisions on the spot as to whether or not the class is ready to move forward, or if, you know, no one's ready to move forward, or if there's pockets of students that are in different places. So they, they're getting real-time data and making decisions in the moment. It is so different than it used to be, then, of course, we're using iReady, as we mentioned, and MCAS. It's never been better, as far as I can tell, than the way it is now, where teachers are literally meeting with different groups of students, students are helping one another, students are standing at the whiteboards. The differentiated instruction and the personalized learning has really taken off, and it's really wonderful to see. And so let's see. The iReady, we've had a couple of diagnostics, and the teachers are able to see where the gaps are in the learning. They're working with administration to make sure that they can find classrooms to break out and send students in different places. There are teachers who are talking about flexible grouping, where they will, you know, we've identified three groups of students who are struggling with this, a different group of students are struggling with that, and those students are moving to different teachers based on their struggles. So it's, it's a lot of team effort and a lot of people doing the right things to help our students.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I'm just going to follow up regarding assessment and talking about how we use that data and our assessment in our professional learning community time, and allowing grade levels to have common planning time to consult, to really analyze and look at that data. So the structures look a little different from the three buildings. It happens bi-weekly here at the high school, at department-level meetings, it happens weekly at PLCs at Mitchell School, and during those PLC times, they're not only looking at assessment data, but they're also dialing down, like you talked about, at instruction, all based on how students are performing, and that's the power of assessment. So when we talk about assessment, we've tried to be clear that it's not just these formal standardized tests that we're talking about when we assess our students. And so at Central School, we have weekly grade-level meetings, which is a time where the grade levels will talk about instruction and assessment, aligning them, seeing how students have performed, and seeing whether or not we're maintaining the rigor of an assessment, or we should make adjustments with our assessment, or our instruction to say backwards by design, what should we be doing differently? And those happen on a weekly basis. As far as more professional learning community time at Central School, it looks a little different when we have longer chunks of time, it's about quarterly for us right now. That's just based on our structure with our schedules and how we can actually get all of our teachers to have that common planning time to do that. But those are other opportunities for us to look at not only the assessment data, but then dialing down with our instruction and commonalities. So that would be inclusive practices, identifying and analyzing samples of that, to help support teachers in their everyday practice about how they make those flexible. teachers in their everyday practice about how they make those flexible groups, how they really provide students with choice and opportunity to show multiple ways of how they can apply knowledge, which is also really important for us, because we know some of these tests, some students are exceptional at, and others show their knowledge in different ways. And so, you know, we're being holistic in our approach to assess students, and not just putting all of our eggs in one basket, like we've said before, too. And it is April, so we'll still have a little bit of a holiday reference there. The other pieces to talk about, Mrs. McPartland mentioned them, too, is our ongoing data conversation. So yes, we had our round two of assessments in the wintertime, which then led to those classroom conversations and data meetings that we're now having across the district, at the high school level, at Mitchell School, and again, at Central School. So we're not only looking at grade level assessment, but then really looking at classroom level and diving down to students, because that's where the instructional good lies, right? How students are performing based on what the teacher has been doing, what supports have we put in place, and are the students showing us that in their growth across multiple data points. And if they are, fantastic. We know we found their sweet spot. And for those that aren't, we know our job's not done, and how do we better support those students? If it's somebody that needs to be, have further acceleration in their learning, or if it's students that, again, we're building those bridges, they can access grade level curriculum by also giving those foundation skills that they might be missing to be able to attain grade level. And that's where we want them to be every day. So we're looking forward to the end results, when we'll have more classroom conversations and data meetings at the end of the year, when we do have that final assessment with iReady. We also do DIBBLES at Central School. The other buildings will have other data that they bring to those conversations, too. But then it's really celebrating student achievement and growth, and really talking to those teachers about their instructional practices and what really worked well. So it's a lot to highlight, and then it gives us areas for improvement, whether teacher-based, within a classroom setting, about where their students perform to a whole grade level, about maybe our scope and sequence with certain content. It allows us to look at all of that. So we're looking forward to those opportunities.
And then finally, we take that data, and then it's used, as you've heard multiple times tonight, it's used on an ongoing basis, to review student learning, to review practices. What can we do to best support our students at every level, including our multi-system, multi-tiered system of support for students who may have disabilities and looking at that. So we start out at that general education level, use all of that data at different points and times. At each of the buildings, they're having their ongoing data meetings. As we get more data, we're going through that. They have the iReady and the DIBBLES three times a year. We use that data on a regular basis. And all of that ongoing data is just helping us to make sure our kids are moving forward and filling in those gaps. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I was curious about something. So when would we, would we be able to see any, like, overall, not specific classrooms, like, an overall view of how the kids are doing?
Probably about mid-June. So once the data, once all students are finished being assessed, all that data can be pulled together in just a couple of days. Teachers get it immediately at their classroom level, but then to look at more holistic approach, it takes about a week. Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
For our high school students, so it sounds like Central's using DIBBLES, and then we have iReady right up through grade eight, right? Isn't it? So for nine through 12, are they really doing like a common assess, is that where the common assessments are taking place? So we have that other?
Common assessments, a lot of talk within the department, on the spot assessments in the classroom, in the lunchroom, when you walk in, inevitably, you know, teachers do want to talk about other things, but a lot of times, that's what they're talking about, is how to help their students learn and grow.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
Thanks. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it was shared with all of you at the beginning of the year, sort of that heat map of where students are in the green, yellow, red, by grade level. So we can plan to have that in June, too, so you can see that side-by-side comparison as to where they started in the fall, and where they are in the spring.
That'll be great. Thank you. Before we get to the action items, I just want to point out, so the high school concert was last week, and I happened to go. I know, I did, I think I saw Gina there, and Liz was there. It was awesome. I enjoyed it. I just wanted to point that out. They did a good, they did a great job. Bye, Lilia.
Bye.
Bye.
At this time, I would take a motion to approve, this is the second reading, on school committee policy EBCFA face coverings, and it's just updating from the DPH and CDC.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll probably have to change it again. As soon as it changes again, we'll be eliminating it, I'm sure. But it's okay. We're updated now.
With this vote, it's part of our policy, right?
Right. And I would take a motion to approve the minutes from the March 28th, 23 school committee meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And I take a motion to approve the Council Payroll Warrant 39 SV dated April 3rd, 23.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous. I take a motion to approve Payroll Warrant 40 PS dated March 29th, 23.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
I have a question on that. Sorry.
Sure.
So in my packet on the payroll, I have the last page signed by everybody. Is everyone, is this just a copy for a record?
Remember the special one last time? I told you, yeah, that was out. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks for double-checking, Gordon.
Hey, that's what I'm here for.
I take a motion to approve the generous donation from the Teachers Driving Academy for $2,500 for East Bridgewater Junior/Senior High School Student Activities Account. Thank you. Thank you, TDA. That was very generous.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor?
Hi. I didn't know we had a Teachers Drive Academy.
Well, they're their own company. It's their own.
It's not our teachers.
No.
It's the teachers.
Yes, it's, yeah, that's the name of it.
I was going to say, wow, that's pretty good.
We have a lot of students that utilize them.
Nice.
We have, next week is April vacation. We wish, I hope everybody has a great vacation. But I went, Dr. Williams, just to give a quick plug on our Acceleration Academy.
Yep. So our second round of our Acceleration Academy, you may have noticed, it was opened up to all students that were interested in participating. We knew from history last year that our April vacation wasn't as well-attended as our February. I'm sure as it's getting nicer out and spring sports are going on. So it was opened up to all students. A little bit low with the numbers here at the seventh through 10th level, but certainly full, all the grades, grade three up through seven, which is great. We're ready to go. Again, using some of our local restaurants as our food service for the week. So that's always a draw when they've got Flashback Franks and Flavoured Cafe, and so Vikings. So we're expecting a good week.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Monday through Thursday.
Wishing you all a lighter vacation, or a less crazy vacation.
It starts Tuesday. Sorry, Monday's the holiday.
Monday.
Yes.
Aren't you running the Boston Marathon?
I'm going to watch the Boston Marathon.
Is it Tuesday through Friday, or Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. It's three days.
That's nice.
Yep. A little bit longer.
Thank you. At this time, I would take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
I was waiting for Becky.